Okay, so I don't have a Linda.
Yeah, let's let's let the Bernard and Jarvis guy go.
Yeah, so we'll use the previous agenda.
Template.
Yep, so we're opening the meeting at seven fifteen. And you want to come on up?
Sure.
We're gonna start with you. We'll introduce ourselves and you can introduce yourself. And then if you don't mind, there's a button at the bottom of the bar there. It'll turn on the green light. And that will allow the recording to hear you. All right, so meeting is open. We'll introduce ourselves.
Gary Foot.
Bill Irwin.
Ken Carter.
All right, and you are sir?
Alex Smith here with Bernard and Jarvis representing Colton Boiling.
Hey, and if I recall, this is the case that we heard previously on the basis of, you know, what would be needed to make it an acceptable. And I think when we were looking at it, it was not a whole lot.
Uh huh.
It was just.
It's just that frontage issue because we couldn't understand the arc length, if that actually was affronted or what where is the actual frontage?
Sure, so the arc length is the is the distance along the arc.
Yeah.
Um, so you would add up the arc length plus these fault has a tangent. In there as well. So you would add up the arc length plus that tangent. I think it was three tenths short of two hundred and seventy five last meeting. So we had to adjust it by three tenths to make the two seventy five.
Can you sorry, can you just sort of explain that to me? Where's where's the tangent length or is there is there a tangent?
Sure, so on lot eight, it's the southeast of the forty seven thirty two. So that bearing and bearing and distance straight line, that's the tangent. Um, and then the curve here, the arc length of two twenty seven sixty eight plus the forty seven thirty two is exactly your two seventy five.
Okay, okay.
Um, and then on your other side here, you have the arc length of two thirty two ninety four. And then this forty two seventy one, um, it's a little over two seventy five on that one. So.
So both lot and seven and eight will have frontages that meet the zoning requirements.
Yeah.
Does that create any problem for lots five and six? I know that they're not considered.
I mean, I had the original math that those lots. Well, the data is from the nineties.
These have been confirmed to be two hundred and seventy five.
Yeah. You know, I I can add up these here for lots five and six, but again, they're existing lots. So so we're not going into lot five or six for the frontage. Um, we found pins.
No, no, I was just wondering about for.
On both ends of of.
Yeah, we were just wondering if in the future, if they were sold separately, that they would be problems relative to their frontage.
But yeah, well, that's a future problem.
Right, I I can add up the distances here on this map, um, but I assume they were two seventy five. The maps only from twenty twenty.
Yeah, is that when those were, you know, when those lots were made? Is that nineties sometime or?
Yeah.
I don't know if we've had zoning then. Bakersfield has too, but your Bakersfield got zoning.
So it's actually in the plan. I happen to have read it. And the so zoning regulations adopted sixty six. So we were talking about when we got zoning.
Yeah.
It was sixty six, so.
Yep.
Lot five has two seventy six. Um, sure, lot six is. Lot six is. Or let's see seven. Forty three. That that has it as well. That's got two seventy nine on lot six.
Yeah, that's good. It's obviously not being subdivided for those. But one of the reasons I ask about it is we wouldn't want to create something positive for lot seven and eight.
Sure.
And make lots six and five problems.
Right.
For the future because somebody might come along and want to actually use those.
Right.
Do you have to do a little adjusting to the map to make that work or is that just?
I did. I did end up adjusting that by three tenths. Um, so I I'm so I shifted, you know, that this eastern line of the lot seven, two acre, I I shifted that over, um, because I had additional on lot seven, so I took it by eight. Again, that's what they should. Yeah, they had it three tenths short on this map for some reason on for lot eight. I'm not sure why, but right, so originally this bearing was straight all the way up to the road. Now it comes up to this um, pin set and then it's got a slight angle break to to meet the two seventy five.
And then the two acre lot.
Yeah.
It's indicated by the red line at the south. Is it go all the way to the road? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that overhead wire just kind of confuses things in there. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, one of the right, they did. I believe you asked for the overhead wires um, from the last meeting. The wetlands was mentioned, um, those have been brought in.
Where is their own?
You know, it was the wetlands. Looks like the driveway goes through the buffer, um. But that that driveway was existing. I know we looked back on Google Maps and you can do a timeline on Google. It looks like from two thousand three to two thousand six, it was put in then from what we saw. Contours were added since last time.
Okay.
A little faint, but you can use.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can. Didn't want to make them too dark to kind of then get away from the rest of the map.
I got a question.
Yeah.
You you've got lot proposed septic location on eight and also on seven.
Uh, yeah.
Is that a choice or?
I believe he would have the choice whether which one he wants to use, um, because he had there were septic designs done for each of one of these lots. So I'm just showing that's where it was proposed for lot eight. That's where it was for lot seven.
And also the well location, uh, same.
Same, yeah, he's not going to use them bald, but but he.
Oh, when you get your, when you get your uh, permit for sewage and everything, uh, everything. You would be either either or, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where's the well for the new lot seven? No, no, of the the fixed area allocation, because that's called lot seven. And then the other is also lot seven.
Seven A or something if.
You dissolving that line down the middle there so that?
That's right. That's right. So so lot seven is going from the ten point two seven to two acres.
Great, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then.
Now that's getting dissolved and the remainder is going with lot eight.
Right, so. So it would be eighteen point five one and then two acres. And then where's the water or well for the fixed area allocation?
I don't believe he plans to have water. It sounds like he was planning a garage um, on the lot. So we have not proposed a um, water wastewater for that two acres.
So lot eight would go to eighteen point five one, lot seven A would be the old seven minus two acres.
Well, the ten point two seven.
Which would be ten or um, eight point two. Well, actually, it comes to a total of ten point because you're adding them together. No, I'm sorry. It's just two. That's right, two and eighteen point five one.
Right, so you're adding that eight point two seven onto the ten point two four onto lot eight.
Right, gotcha. And so the fixed area allocation says lot seven. The new lot eight is labeled that. There's this language about lot seven for the proposed septic and proposed well. It seems like that that should either be eight for lot eight proposed septic. And lot eight proposed well location because it's now on lot eight, right?
Yeah, yeah, we could do something with the verbiage there or we could.
Or you could get rid of one of them.
Yeah, see which one he's going to use and then just get rid of the other one because you're right, it looks like now it's saying that that's going to go to the two acres.
Right. Yeah.
Objective.
Yeah. Right. So I think, you know, one of the things that we frequently do when a project gets to the stage is we vote on a final plat with conditions. And it's possible that we could condition the vote tonight for a final plat being delivered here, that it either changes these to be lot eight proposed septic along with the other one that says lot eight proposed well, because he could still choose between the two in the future, you know, he might have other reasons. And then um.
Yeah, maybe I could say law law eight alternative septic.
Something like that. That would clarify why there's the two choices of the proposed well. Yeah.
When you're creating a new lot like this, new lot seven, does it have to have a wastewater permit or?
No, 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 you can create a new lot as vacant land um, with no state permits on it.
So when you're doing this, why not? This is going to be lot eight. Why not pick that line out?
You keep it in there and and then the ledge and it says boundary lines to be dissolved. I notice it's kind of a straight line. It should be dashed. I think that line type is funny, but.
So see right here.
Leading it, you 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 say it's.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
You take a notes?
Yeah.
Okay, me too. So maybe you.
Between us?
Yeah, okay. All right. And then the proposed house is not anything solid yet. It's something in the future.
Yes, the last time we were out there, he did have stakes kind of where he was planning, um, and so we located the stakes, so.
And then the existing driveway does go that whole distance. It's described there.
Yeah, it's a steep one.
And it looks like that there's a part of the existing driveway that crosses the boundary between the new lot seven fixed area allocation and the new lot eight. And it will there be some sort of right of way?
Yes, so that pink dash line, it's a little hard to see, um, but that's the point of that, so so above that.
Okay, that's the proposed easement.
Access easement over lot seven and eight.
Okay. And that'll be put into the deed for the fixed area allocation.
Yeah.
Good.
I do have it labeled in between the two curved datas.
Okay, that's what C one and two are. Those are curved cuts. Theoretically, since it's all dirt out there.
Right, so the two distances, right, the arc length is the actual length along the arc and then that cord is like if you were to draw a straight line between a curve.
Okay.
Um, so that's going to be shorter of a distance.
All right. So just gonna look at our table. Pretty comfortable so far, but the table is helpful to remember number of the things that are required. All right, so this is the rural district. I think that was another thing that we were talking about last time, that the district had to be.
I think they had put conservation on there at first, but it's actually in the.
Right, so that's fixed. All right, so we've got name and address of the owners. Statement of existing and intended use. Okay, and that's over here. Then the lot shouldn't be any odor, noise, smoke, dust issues there at this time. So the things that are shown, the roads, boundaries, dimensions, zoning district, location footprint, height of existing and proposed structures, which I mean, we don't really have any specifics on the height, but it's got a location and footprint.
It's going to be permanent for that anyway.
Yeah, and that would be something you don't want to build anything over thirty five feet. There have been some problems with that recently.
Gotcha.
Uh, surface waters, wetlands, flood plain, so it's just that one area of wetland up in the north.
Yeah.
And then vegetation is almost all that kind of bluish is the natural vegetation of trees and the lighter, almost green is the grassland. Is there any outdoor lighting?
I don't believe so, no.
We've got the contours. There's no landscaping or screening on the basis of everything that's there. Don't see that that's needed. And there's not any grading or excavation at this point in time. That would happen during the building permit phase. And um all right. I see, looks like everything's in order.
I move we accept this with that condition about the language about the proposed well and septic to be kind of cleaned up to represent that it's all for lot eight.
That makes sense.
Yep, that one of one of our goals is to make sure that whatever ends up in the official plat here gives clarity for as far into the future as possible.
Right.
It's why just trying to clear up that language. We all understand it at this moment, but people in the future will try to figure out why are there two lot seven?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there a second?
One second.
Oh, Heather, welcome.
Heather.
And can you hear us okay? All right. And um, is there any further discussion? So we were just talking about the Colton and Missy Boylan proposal for fixed area allocation. We had uh, looked at that originally at the last meeting.
Okay, yes, now I remember, yes, yep.
It's the one that's got four ten acre lots. They're making a fixed area allocation with two acres out of one. Dissolving the boundary line between the two to make one big one at eighteen point five one and the other one at two acres. And we've looked through the table four point one, application requirements, and we didn't see any problems. So we have.
Sounds good.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to accept this uh, final plat when delivered with the conditions that the language about old lot seven changing to lot eight, please say aye.
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 All right, four to zero. Great. All right, sir. Think we're all set.
Very well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
And we want to keep the set for is this one enough? You need one, two?
I can have two. Yeah, I mean, either way.
Okay.
Got that one too, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And um yeah, we're moving on, so I just addressing that. Thank you. You're welcome. Um, so minutes would be the next item on the agenda and they were sent for both the um, May meeting. I think.
At June meeting, June and July.
Yes. Yes, okay, so we have the June and July minutes. Is there any, are there any changes for the June and July minutes?
Did Nikki get the email response that she had misspelled my name? If she did, I don't care if it's misspelled. But.
I I saw, yeah, I I don't know if she corrected it. Now, let me just, it's um, in the official July minutes, it's got Jewett with an I.
Yeah, that's incorrect.
Yeah, and then um so we'll have to either wait or if you're willing to accept the misspelling.
I I don't care. That way they can't come back and yell at me about something. That's not me.
All right. All right, so we've voted and passed the minutes. Is that right? Do we? No, so we have a motion.
Yeah, I move we accept those minutes as written with the one.
I suck at it.
All right. And um we will note that uh typographical error in your name is there and we'll try to get that so that it doesn't happen again, but it's in the email address correctly as to.
Yeah, it is. And I noticed it's in the town plan as J E W I T T as well. I'm like, great, I can't be blamed for that either.
All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of passing the June and July minutes as uh, corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, four to the zero there. And um, we do have Luke on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure, is there anything that very good, want to make sure that there's no other.
Is it here with us or you okay back there?
Right, so Luke is going to come up here because he's soft spoken and in that way we'll be able to hear. And that mic should be on with a green light just to make sure it's getting recorded.
Okay, I think I just turned it on.
Right.
So um, yeah, this time um, I have a data presentation um, which I'm going to pull up. So basically, one of the first things we can do as part of this process is just go into the plan and update all the data that's currently in there um, from places like the census or other things.
Could you talk just a little bit louder?
Yeah, sure. Um, so the first thing we can do is go through the town plan and update all the data that's in there from the census and other places. Um, and then that can kind of guide the discussion of uh, when we're thinking about what the major themes of the plan update should be, like what we should focus on uh, the most. So um, I'm going to share this, um, we'll see if June. Uh, yeah, it will go into the zoom ring, so Heather should be able to see it too.
So Luke is going to put up a slideshow that we can all see here and you should see it too. We see it here. You see it there, Heather?
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
Get a little bigger.
All right, Linda.
Okay, um, yes, so um, first we're gonna do the population household data um, and then some more specific data about uh, the housing stock and housing affordability and also economic data. Um, so just a quick note, I used the census for the most part, whenever that was allowed. Um, there is more data, recent data there from the American Community Survey from twenty twenty three. Um, but since that's an estimate, especially for our smaller towns, there's a high margin of error, so um, the census is a lot more reliable than the American Community Survey since it's um, a census of the whole population instead of a sample. Um, so uh, we're available just from the twenty twenty census and there's a few numbers from the American Community Survey too. So just a note on the margin of error there. So this is the overall population trend of Bakersfield since eighteen hundred. Um, this is already in your town plan, but I added on the end twenty twenty here. Um, so you can see there was a bit of an increase from two thousand to twenty time and a bit of a decrease from twenty ten to twenty twenty. Um, not that big of a decrease, just forty nine people, but um, still shows up in this scale here. Also, feel free to jump in and there's any questions or comments about any of this. Um, so here's a comparison of what the D six A compared to surrounding towns. So as you can see, it's um, not that that different from other towns in Franklin County. Um, it's similar to Highgate and Franklin, Charlotte and Montgomery or seeing. Um, and you can see those semijercentos like some of them, uh, they're growing a lot. Um, so.
I've seen maps in the past where it's kind of got influxes and flows. And I don't know if that's available for us or even from the regional perspective.
I think there is a state all that you can get out of the town, where they're coming from and where they're moving to. So that's something we could look at if you're interested.
Just it's interesting, one would make the assumption that some folks in the pink communities might be moving to the green communities.
Yeah.
Because there's a decrease in the pink and increase in the green and it's rural to urban, which is an important demographic piece of information, if it's true. It may not be true, though.
Yeah, and well, in the presentation, I also have the commuting data, so where people who live here are commuting to and then the comparison of twenty ten to twenty twenty two, I think, the most recent, so.
Back one slide.
Sure.
So we've actually added fifty eight people since twenty twenty apparently or?
So that's supposed to say two thousand, actually. So that's so so if you look at, you know, two thousand to now, that's a slight increase, but if you look at twenty ten to now, it's a slight decrease. Yeah, sorry for that. So this is looking at age groups. So there's under eighteen, there's eighteen to sixty four and sixty five plus. And this is the comparison of two thousand to twenty twenty. So the past twenty years, basically, how those age groups have changed. So we can see there's been significant decrease in the under eighteen population and a percent increase in the over sixty five population. So the town is getting older on average. There's an increase of thirty seven to forty three point seven since two thousand. The population has stayed pretty significant, the eighteen to sixty four age group.
I'm curious, was that like, I know that in twenty twenty, because of COVID, we had a lot of people influxing. So I'm surprised that we're going downhill, actually. Because I know we we got a lot of people in during COVID.
This is up till twenty twenty, so it might it might actually be different now.
Yeah, it does not include the COVID years, which started in twenty twenty.
Okay, so it stopped. Okay, I hear you.
When you, when you put everything together, Luke, will you use something closer to twenty five?
I can. The the thing with the population is the census is the most accurate, and that's only every ten years. I can put the American Community Survey number from twenty twenty three in there too, but just with the caveat that that's based on an estimate, so it's not an actual account of the number of people. So it might not necessarily be accurate, but yeah, I think it would still be good to put in there.
It might be a statement in one of the, part of the text as opposed to making a whole new graph out of it.
Good bill, get it from the town pretty much. They know pretty well between the school and the town.
They know how many they 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 have those kind of numbers at the at the town clerk or?
Yeah.
They do, yeah.
That's interesting, yeah. You could look at.
I know, man. I know how many there's going to be some rentals you can't, you know, how many is in there, but.
Yeah, yes.
On rental, I don't know.
And it's a pretty small number.
Yeah.
Thankfully.
Yeah, I can look it up. Yeah, they do. That's true. They have like property tax data and things like that that might help get an idea.
Lot more fair. No, no, what the population, because I know it's different than what you're putting up there.
And by the time we do this, it'll be twenty twenty six, so, you know, six years might be interesting to see if there's some possible change.
So there's household characteristics here too. So this is looking at according to those American Community Survey, like the what the households generally look like here. So there's a few categories. There's couples with children, couple without children, household alone. Household with children. Other family or non-family household. So you can see sort of like what the what the major demographics here, what the makeup of the households are. So it's most, well, predominantly couples without children, forty five percent. And then followed by couples with children and people within.
Yeah, that supports a lot of the ideas of change in the school system, which big thing.
Well, yeah, yeah, like the decrease in the under eighteen. Yeah, and there hasn't been a huge like there's been an overall population that stayed pretty consistent from four ninety five to four ninety seven. And now which household is two and two and a half people, basically.
Interesting, because that sort of makes you think like, oh, I only, there's only two houses built in Bakersfield.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, I have that on a graph here in the housing section, which is going to be my next slide anyway. So you can see the population versus the number of housing units. And this was something that was already updated for twenty twenty. So we can see that the number of those units has gone up pretty much every decade from nineteen seventy to ten. And then twenty ten to twenty twenty, it levels off. And then you can see those here too. This is spring new homes that have been issued. So this is starting in two thousand. You can see it's at a higher level and increasing up until two thousand and five, where it sort of drops down to the level of just a few year, which is what we're still seeing today. And I haven't gotten these middle numbers, but yeah, do that.
So they're available, it's just the.
Yeah, I think the town probably has that information, so it's just a matter of going through the files and getting that. And for the recent years, we've been collecting this for our housing dashboards, because it will get it from there.
So you're talking about building permits or new construction?
I think the houses.
Think one of the things that you're you're seeing up there from, what, two thousand? Was it two thousand and two? There's, there's quite a lot there for a couple. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six years, I think. There was there was building lots available at that point.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons now they are not available. That's why you aren't getting it now.
Yeah, it's filling up. And there's less, there's less space for new houses. Yeah, that could definitely be part of that, because there was a lot of growth in the past few decades, you can see, I mean, from six hundred people, basically doubling from nineteen seventy to twenty ten.
Yeah, it's good to take a long view as much as you can. It's not really valuable to only look at the short view.
Yeah.
And and speaking of long and short, you know, the region has a lot of data too. And hopefully some of the data for the region can be looked at relative to the plan. Specifically, I think for the housing, as we saw with the presentation just the other night for the Regional Planning Commission.
AI.
Where Bakersfield could benefit with growth of certain number of dwellings and how that shapes Franklin and Grand Isle County too. Be nice to see.
Thank you. We got the regional context on looking at data versus just, yeah, it's it's nice to have a comparison point.
You see a lot in the tables that talk about Franklin County, but I think it's really it's it's weird how a table just does not make the impact that a graph has.
Changing some of those tables to graphs or adding graphs in, like we can think about how we want to present that data as effectively.
Because the the nature of people today is they don't want to read the images.
One of the reasons you don't get the people in in Bakersfield, okay, internet.
Yeah.
Cell phone coverage is a biggie.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've heard that that's an issue here for sure, lack of cell phone coverage.
I think internet is another. Yeah.
Like lack of internet service to homes here. Yeah.
Where we live, I mean, this is popping now, but like services are in the neighborhood. And once house was fully, you can't, you know, we, when we got internet, I didn't know what it really was. So I think, I don't look at it.
Oh, yeah.
Three gigabytes or megabytes or whatever it is, and it's not very fast. Doesn't bother me any, but when my kids are here, they're like, how's it going?
Well, well, it's the fiber hasn't made it up.
It's coming, but I don't.
Yeah, I don't know, the the CUDs, I haven't heard a lot about them recently.
Yeah, I mean, I know that they're still thing, and there are people in our office who work with them, but yeah, I haven't heard a lot of news recently.
We had Communication Union in Bakersfield. I don't know if that deteriorated because our representative for the CUD passed away. And that might be something to note is that, you know, if the community wants something like communications, we need people to help.
I'm still on the board and John West is still, John West replaced Brenda.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but to be honest, I'm not even sure I had to take a hiatus because of the health concerns I had. So I'd ask John West how it's coming along, but to be honest, I have fiber at my house now. I've had fiber just came to my house like two weeks ago and John way down the road farther past Rosalee's. I don't know if you know where John West lives, but he lives way down. And he has fiber through Fidium, not through the CUD. So supposedly all of last year, anybody with an eight oh two exchange, or I'm sorry, not eight oh two exchange, Bakersfield Exchange for
Eight two seven.
Yes, eight two seven should all have the opportunity. That was supposed to be guaranteed by Fidium Fiber last year. And they couldn't come after the Ennisburg Bakersfield people, because I'm, I come out of Ennisburg side until this year. So they ran their splitters. There, I think the splitter, the cable came through in May, and I was stalking the splitters in June and then calling them in July. And so I've been on fiber for, I think it's like, this is the third week now. Pretty sure everybody in Bakersfield should have it offered to them at this point. Considering they were, they've been down Witch Cat and all those other roads too. So I would be surprised to hear that we're how ma, I I would be interest, actually interested to hear how many people are, still don't have access to it. And maybe some don't realize that it's offered to them. Like if I hadn't been there that day, well, I, because I work from home and and the dog went wild and I looked out the window and saw the guy. They're pretty quiet. They just go through and do their thing and they're probably, you wouldn't have even known they were there if I hadn't have been home, I guess. So I'd look into that, Ken. I'd I'd be surprised if you don't have it available to you at this point.
Well, yeah, they were running the fiber up in our neighborhood there, but they haven't hooked it up yet or it's not available quite yet, but I think it's supposed to be available soon.
Yeah, I had to be like, I had to call them up two weeks in a row and say, let's go, I know it's here. And finally, and finally, because I I got them to come up, you know, I knew they were there. They just have to get the technicians up here and they have, your, your address will almost always show as not available when you're signing up for Fidium Fiber, or it'll almost always say it's not. Mine still says it's not available online, even though I have it hooked up. So, you know, just call them.
Take less on them. All right, let's get back to this. Canons.
Okay, so so, yeah, you can see the housing has slowed down with the decrease in population. And then here, this is looking at the age of housing units right now as of twenty twenty three. So you can see a good percentage of them are from the eighties and the nineties, which makes sense. And then the second largest portion is from before nineteen forty, so there's, there's a lot of housing that's pretty everyone and a lot of housing from relatively recently, but then if you look at recent decades, it sort of drops. Yeah, it's a zero percent. I mean, I'm assuming it's probably a really small number, and it's just like rounding down or something. Obviously, some housing units have been built since twenty twenty, but they're not showing up in this scale. And the census says.
Using the residential property value.
Uh, is it in parcel data?
Don't know what that means, to be honest.
It's 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 based on the grand list, basically. And then filtered just to residential parcels.
And is that reflective of most recent?
Um, I think so. I think.
They've been doing a revaluation. I don't know what like where it stands.
This this might be for that. Um, so this is just whatever is existing in there right now.
Really want to try to reflect.
Yeah.
Because it's really on the minds of a lot of people. And if we can't show something that is important to people, then they're going to be frustrated with what else in the report.
Interesting to look at, like the overall increase in the average valuation too, since the last, since before and after.
Yeah, yeah.
But you got up there, is that for just Bakersfield?
Uh, yeah.
I can't believe there's thirty four vacant housing units.
Bakersfield?
What is some current data, right?
So this is, this is from the census. It could be showing up as vacant for a lot of reasons. Usually seasonal, seasonal units show up as vacant sometimes. I tried to filter those out into their own category here, so you can see forty eight seasonal housing. But it's possible some of those thirty four vacant housing units are seasonal too.
Forty eight seasonal housing units either. And what year was that average residential property value?
Saying that we think that's from the grand list for the assessment that they're doing right now.
Companies are going for with two acres, fairly nice house, I mean, nice house. You sold for seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
One of them for six, five, yes, wow, we go.
But yeah.
One, one right over next to me there, boy, I sold them the lot. Seven hundred, over seven.
You got almost that back then, probably, didn't you?
Yeah.
Wow, I mean, you can have these numbers, these seem low to me, so that makes sense. But the the assessment's just super old and that's fine. So you can make sure to get the the updated one. Percent single unit housing, the census says there's a few member homes too as well. An eighty nine percent owner occupied and a hundred percent renter occupied.
See, that's where trying to draw a comparison is helpful, because people don't understand what, how does that compare to, I don't know, Milton or Georgia? Or even obviously St. Albans Town. St. Albans City would be totally different, because there's probably more renters there.
It might, it would just be interesting numbers. They are an urban place, you get this many renters and boroughs kind of.
Because I think one of the things that we're going to likely want to stress as a policy is making more housing units available, whether they're rentals inside an owner occupied unit for that could be very valuable for the town to grow.
Yeah, I think I will get to look at, I can, I can add that at at a comparison of other towns. Um, to to me, my impression is that the renter percentage is lower than a lot of other places I've seen.
Be small, yeah.
The fifty one rented occupied housing units, that's way off.
You think so?
It's higher?
Huh?
Think it's higher than that, or?
No.
You think it's lower?
Wow, that's even worse than he's in real estate.
I got rentals.
Yeah.
I know what's out there. I know what's out there. They were near, I don't know, what the accountant camps and stuff, what, but.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think what we're finding is a, some of the data is a little bit. Older, but this says twenty twenty three.
Yeah, but this is also from a community survey, which is uh an estimate and not a census, so that could also. Just the margin there for these really, it's can be pretty high.
Fifty units and expanded up. Six times and that could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hard to get, and actually, that number I would think.
Yeah.
Taking the records in town.
And rentals aren't really, like, counted very easily, I mean.
Yeah, it's better to get data for it than.
All right.
So now we're looking at housing affordability and housing prices, uh, so. The state definition of affordability isn't that helpful, because it. Franklin County, the Burlington, South Burlington uh statistical area, so. As you can see, the income is higher than the county income, so what's, what's of. Judging affordability based on those standards, um, even though it's the state definition, we usually look at. The town, the town income and the county median income is the reference points, so. Um, this shows the sale price in Bakersfield and Franklin County and the. Since two thousand everywhere, um, so you can see um. A big increase in the past few years everywhere, including Bakersfield. Um, so, um, this is the one twenty twenty four, the. Sale price for. Those three hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Um, according to the. This calculator, uh, factoring in uh closing costs and mortgage and fees and everything like that. Um, to be considered affordable, we need an income of a hundred and thousand dollars. And then looking at census still there, so looking at what. Housing costs, it's saying that uh. Thirty percent of homeowners are over thirty percent of their income on housing costs if they have a mortgage. And then there's less renters in the town, but we can do this. Exercises for the median, so that was twelve hundred dollars um. Last year, which would be forty eight thousand dollars if you're. Thirty percent of your income on housing and then uh eighteen percent of renters are. Uh, spending over thirty percent. Which is a, I mean, there was small numbers of renters overall, it's still good to do the breakdown. Yeah.
We're not really a resort oriented community, we're close to some, but we're not. Close enough, it would be interesting. Montgomery is as well as Cambridge.
Just, you know, if you happen to know if Airbnb's are included in that somehow, is that part of a rental thing or?
I don't think short term rentals are included, it's really hard to get data on short term rentals, um. I think that would be like a valuable thing to include in, and just to know. How many there are roughly in Bakersfield.
Yeah, so the Health Department's Food and Lodging Program might be a source of. Airbnb data.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a lot of them aren't registered, I think, even if they're supposed to be technically. Um, and there's towns like, I think Montgomery is looking at doing a short term rental ordinance for the town. Um, and maybe starting to charge like some town fees on them, or at least having them get permits, so they have. Data on where they are and how many there are, um, but. Yeah, I think, I think that would be good to look at, just to know.
Yeah, you know, I mentioned Cambridge, and that's another thing that is somewhat. Interesting to me is that we make so many comparisons to St. Albans and. We are so close to Cambridge.
Yeah.
And Johnson, you know, they border our town. We're the westernmost, or almost, we're one of the westernmost municipalities. So it might be interesting if there is something that can be looked at there to see whether there's, especially when it comes to resort. Cause that might be something that we could explore in the community, is if there's not enough. Rentals at all, maybe some people will find it's valuable to consider renting, even if it's short term renting. It increases the overall availability.
Yeah, yeah, and it, yeah. Great, yeah, we can definitely add that to the housing section, I think that's a good idea. Um. So this is just looking at educational attainment, um, it's pretty similar. In terms of high school, the public, so the county and the state are pretty high level and. And bachelor's degree are higher, so Bakersfield has a higher percentage than Franklin County, but a lower percentage than the state as a whole. Um, and I'm looking at. Changes of Bakersfield residents, like economic sector. So the biggest category is educational services, healthcare and social assistance, so that. It was twenty three percent of workers in Bakersfield. Um, and then the next one's on manufacturing and. Uh, professional, scientific, and management, and the most true of endless management services, these categories are all crazy. Yeah, but it kind of gives you an idea of what the breakdown is.
You count, if the, you're saying household, okay, if the wife and the. Husband work or the, the man. And there, is that, is that where you get your eighty five thousand?
So that would, that, that would be the total income of the whole household, that the whole house. Yeah, uh, looking at, was there like single person households, like what their income is, or anything, anything that's a household. So whether it's a person living alone, or a couple, or a family, um, just the median of that, that income.
And these are occupations, but they're not in. Bakersfield, they're residents of Bakersfield. For example, Mylan and St. Albans for manufacturing job. And that again is an interesting facts facet to. It, I think I've seen it before where it shows, it might be the commuting, people commuting into. Albans and Burlington versus. The other way around, I think we're kind of a bedroom community.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you can see on this side, so this is just a. Data, this was the breakdown of the workers that came to. Bakersfield, um, so something interesting is that the amount. Percentage of work in Franklin County, rather than Chitting County, has gone up from thirty five percent to fifty percent, so. People who are working closer than they were in twenty ten, um.
Fuel cost and also maybe the growth of some opportunities. Yeah, in addition to numbers, I think if there's a possibility to share a story.
Hmm.
Is always helpful too, people like to hear a story, like if. There was, I, I just mentioned Mylan, I don't think that's her name anymore either, but that's a pretty big company. But. You know, giving a little story about what this means. If to, for example, the number of people who are. Staying in Franklin County versus going into Chitting County is an important feature. Because people start to think, oh, well, maybe that means there's business opportunities, we can. Have something that caters to those people that are staying in Franklin County, rather than just look at Burlington as. Or Chitting County is the only place we can get any customers.
Yeah, that's a really good idea to have more like uh, like qualitative stories in addition to looking at just the numbers. Um, cause yeah, I feel like when you look at this, you sort of start, what's the story? Yeah.
Doesn't have to be big story, just, you know, a little. Like if that's a little separate. Graphic, maybe even with some picture of cartoon characters or something, it. It draws people to it and the goal is, I think, to get people to read this thing. There, I mean, this is, the most interesting part of this is usually the maps. And then after you do that, it's almost all kind of dense words and I don't mind it, but there's a lot of people that never read it.
Yeah. This update to be like a pretty major, um, like rewrite, so we can definitely work on like readability, breaking it up. I think the public outreach too would be a good opportunity to get some of those stories from people. Um, yeah, maybe we can, yeah, ask people to share.
Well, before I forget, there was something interesting I read in the current one, and that was that a survey was done.
Yeah.
And that might be something interesting for us, like not only to get some data. But also to maybe get some stories, like.
Yeah.
Anyone have a story they'd like to share about why they live in Bakersfield, or why they moved from. Um, someplace else to Bakersfield, or why they started working in Franklin County versus live, working in Chitting County. Things like that.
Yeah, you know, I can even like show some of its data, like does the, like, does this make sense? It does, then like.
Yeah, and do you have a way to reach people? Is there some sort of uh survey that we can take advantage of? That is inexpensive and reaches, it could reach most of this community, I don't know, or do we need to come up with something? On our own.
So yeah, if, if, if you guys are interested in doing a survey as part of this update, um. That's something we've done for other town plans, um, we would probably work with you guys to like get the word out. And. Sometimes we do like, if we're also doing outreach events, sometimes we'll do like a direct mailing to everyone uh. To get the word out of the bat and also get the word out about the survey, um. It can be helpful, like, resources that you already have in your town, like a school newsletter or something like that. Um, surveying there, so it can reach people, um. We have like our own newsletter, but that's more focused on like municipal officials and things like that. We uh do a lot of like direct outreach directly to residents.
Do people here read front page forum? Front, front page forum? Do you ever read that?
No.
No, do you? Yeah. So there's.
Yeah.
Kind of, and, and it might be cheaper too.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be kind of a. Interesting survey. Like you just said, you know, to have fifty percent of the people in this room read front porch forum, it's possibly it's higher within.
Well, I feel like that's an interesting survey idea to have people share stories, cause I feel like. Usually a lot of the surveys I've seen are more focused on like, you know, what is, what is your feedback on this? Thing, it's like a little less uh engaging maybe, so maybe having people share their stories would be.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that it's anonymous.
Yep, yeah, of course.
If we could use whatever we develop at an outreach to get people that come here, that's another way to say. Come, we're conducting a survey, sometimes people, when they know you're actually gonna do a survey. Show up versus if they're only gonna hear people talking.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, this is the last, just looking at the unemployment rate by quarter uh since twenty nineteen, so you can see like. A big spike during COVID in twenty twenty, yeah, and it's pretty much gone back down since then, so. That was a sustained problem in Bakersfield. Yeah, percentage, so this peak was like eight and a half percent. It's back down now to like two percent.
Do you, do you have access to data on people working from home?
Uh, yes.
Cause I think that would be useful to know too, because I know that Vermont is attractive to people. Who wanna work from home, and if Bakersfield, Franklin County. Northwest region can become equally attractive, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, and it'd be interesting to see too, how much of that growth has already happened too, since COVID, like how many remote workers are. Uh. Yeah, still remote here.
Yeah, and that could be a part of the survey too, is. Yeah. Right.
Yeah, well, most people, yeah. Just generally, probably most people working from home are working for someone, or you know, generally.
Right, then, so you'd, you'd really wanna ask, how many days a week do you work out of your home? Versus out of a traditional office associated with your employer? Yeah.
Yeah, like, am I working from home?
I would say, yeah, and I think that that's fine, I think, you know. If, if we had a, you know, eighty percent people working from home, that could be a real. Thing to share with people from outside is, and it also might. Bolster the investment in telecommunications and wireless and, you know. Instead of two hundred foot towers, we get hundred foot towers, just a few more of them.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the survey can be a good opportunity for that, I think. The survey is also gonna be helpful for figuring out, like, not just us being able to get. Data on the town, but also trying to figure out what people's like vision is for the town and what we should focus on in the update. Um, and yeah, since that's, yeah, that's the end of my presentation, so. I was hoping we could talk a little bit more about outreach and what we wanna do for the next steps for that, um.
Heather, did you stay on?
No.
Oh, okay, she's kind of our outreach lead here.
Yeah, well, Mary could follow up with her then and see if she's been able to reach anyone.
It's nice when people have a. You know, sometimes there's this little character that talks to you from the shoulder, if you had a real one that like sent you an email or.
Yeah.
That, that helps people that are really busy. Like a, a partner or uh, just, obviously, we don't wanna make like this your full time job or anything.
I mean, it is my full time.
No, I mean, Bakersfield alone, and we know you're doing a lot for everybody in the region, but um. Yeah, I think we don't wanna go too much longer without.
Yeah.
Some sort of outreach.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely gonna be the next thing that we have to do before we start drafting and rewriting the plan. Um, cause the outreach will have to happen beforehand, so I think it'd be good to know. If we want to focus more on pushing out a survey to a lot of people or doing like more. Of like an in-person type event, like more of a community forum.
I like the idea of sending information out to get people thinking about it. Because I feel like if you just say, hey, come on over, people don't have any understanding of what it's, they're gonna do. And why it would be useful for them to show up.
Yeah, so maybe we do some kind of like mailing or big information push that has the survey and also an invitation to. Like a. Broader like forum type event here at the town hall, where we can have more of like a discussion with people, um.
When you say survey, are you picturing like an actual paper survey or more of a computer survey?
Um, I mean, it could, it could be a computer survey with just like, um, and we could publish the link places or like. Um, I mean, it could, it could be a computer survey with just like, and, and we could publish the link places or like QR codes. And, I mean, I don't know, like, we could. I don't, like mail everyone a copy of the survey, like a paper copy.
Expensive.
Yeah, but that could be expensive. We, something we could do is we could have paper copies available at like the town hall and. Like other places around town and then.
Say the library.
Library, yeah.
The school. So, you know, the, the outreach places are the library, the school is number one. Because of them.
Pretty limited, I mean, it is a limited. Group that's going into the school, you know?
It is a demographic that is focused on younger.
Yeah.
People.
Like we saw in the graph there, like the, the population of Bakersfield sixty five and older is quite high and they're not going into the school or anything.
The town hall, just leaving it right on the. Tabletop there. That people are used to seeing things there. Just a survey. And, you know, the QR code is good for a lot of people that know how to use them, but this is oftentimes rural community.
Yeah.
Too, that, and older that might not understand QR codes.
Yeah, I mean, we can also put the link and make sure it's in a link that's like easy to type in too.
Right, right, right. I think that's great.
So maybe we could do that next meeting. I could bring some draft survey questions and we could look at what we want to ask on the survey. And, um, yeah, I could, I could bring some ideas and we could talk about it and see if there's anything that you want to add or change.
That's great.
Okay.
Cause I think it also gets us thinking. And, um, I, I would also share with everybody, you know, the town plan is actually kind of easy to read. It, it's almost fun to read and, you know, maybe take an hour, a couple of days between now and our next meeting to. Try to read some of it.
That's a good idea. I mean, I remember last time when we did the update, we sort of said, okay, let's, the next time we meet, let's have chapters one through three sort of read and. Questions or ideas about and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if, if, if you take the time to read it too, that'll probably get some good ideas on how to reorganize it and make it better too.
Yeah. And, and maybe, you know, I, I might send out a email to everybody like the Friday before we meet. Because then you have the weekend, oh, hey, yeah, this will be a good time, sit out on the porch and read.
Yeah.
We're, we're all like that, so we should talk about the date of the next meeting, just to make sure that. It's going to be on schedule because.
Yeah, cause Labor Day is happening.
Yeah, that's right, we're already, um, going into September.
Yeah. So I don't think I'm planning to work on Labor Day. If we could do the second Monday instead of the first, that would work.
Do second. It's good for you to know, the select board is here the second and fourth.
Okay, so they're also here on Monday at the same time, okay.
That's why we try the first or third.
Okay.
Now, the third would be the fifteenth. And that actually is okay for me. Ju, excuse me, September fifteenth, September fifteenth for the next media, since we have Labor Day. Okay, so September fifteen.
That works for me. Yeah, and that'd be good to send out like the week before, a little reminder of what we're going to talk about. And I, I have my notes from this meeting, so I can follow up. With like a summary of what we're going to do at the next meeting, so you guys have that too.
Yeah.
Of this and also in the regional plan.
Yeah.
For Bakersfield need to be updated. Okay, regional plans in process of being updated.
Yes.
Is it possible to get corrections to those maps?
Which, which, which maps are you talking about?
My main concern is the column is showing as Nico Billson.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we, we can definitely fix that in the plan. That's in the town plan or the regional plan. Okay.
And then. And so. Yeah, I'm thinking they just published new maps based on the Act two fifty changes. Where, um, I think that they did try to improve the mapping. To fit property lines better too. I think that was a, a complaint. I don't know if they did that with the.
Yeah, so the, the mapping that we're doing for villages in the regional plan. Isn't something that like has impact on the zoning or the town level policies or anything like that? When we have, when, when we put the map in there that says this is Bakersfield Village, that's for. Like state level tax exemptions and also Act two fifty exemptions for housing. So those are things that are already in place, like Bakersfield already has a village center designation. That's just the central part of the village. And we're expanding that by a few parcels, but we're not saying like this is the entire Bakersfield Village is this area. Yeah, it's just, it's just for that one specific program when we're looking at mapping the Bakersfield Village.
Gives me an impression that that's expansion area for the cemetery.
Yeah.
Is not really problems a few years ago because there was people in the community that thought. Bakersfield doesn't have a town common, so we need to buy this land over here and call it a town park.
But it's already the common.
But we already. Park. And then. The cemetery. For sixty years to cater maintaining the town common, which also. Went to the confusion and continued the confusion that is part of the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, well, that, that, that sounds like definitely an error if the common is shown as part of the cemetery. And we can fix that in the town plan for sure, and also make sure that it's not anywhere in the regional plan showing that.
They'll say it better tonight.
Well, we appreciate you coming and hope that you will continue to do so. And, uh, we appreciate your having this nice presentation tonight.
Yeah, thanks.
And taking our suggestions and thoughts and. Looking forward to it, it's.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
I, I hope that it works okay the way we did it tonight where.
Oh, like the meeting setup?
Yeah, where we had a hearing. Most of our hearings are relatively brief.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, this, this is definitely, this definitely takes longer than those do, so I feel like would it make sense to have everyone. Sit for this if they're just here for a hearing? Yeah, yeah.
And it also makes it so we feel like we can just chat.
Right.
We don't have to like try to get it done.
Yeah, there's no time pressure.
If we started at seven until everybody that has a plan or a hearing to come at eight, so. If we have a problem with, like, for some reason, we've got three hearings, we'll let you know.
Okay.
In fact, um, I'm gonna try to, I think we can add you to the email distribution for our meetings.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah, because then you'll know whenever we have a situation come up.
That sounds good.
Was there, wait, was there any email communication about tonight's meeting? Cause I, I didn't see any.
You mean outreach?
Yeah.
No.
Cause I didn't know Alex was going to be here tonight until I, you know, I showed up here, so I wasn't. I know we talked about this a little bit last month about, are we, are we going to try to coordinate with Brian or?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I, I think we were supposed to know, but it might have been that they were. That, um, Jarvis and Company was based, basing their attendance tonight. On having been here last time and being told we would hear them this time. I don't think it came through. The town and the zoning, like some of the other hearings do. Yeah, but I, cause I don't, I, I was surprised when I drove up actually, but then I remembered, oh, as soon as I saw the plot.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I know, we did, like I said, we did talk about that last month about trying to coordinate with Brian a little better somehow or.
Yeah, and. I hope that that works. All right, um, I think. We have covered everything that's normally done. So, one last motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so it is eight thirty eight. All right, all in favor, say aye, aye. We are adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
All right. And I'll have my key in my truck from now on, so I don't have to run back to the house to get it. Yeah, that's where it's, it's going to be, in that little pocket there. In fact, that's where it was for years. And then somebody that shares a home with me. Well, no, she came to the, she, when she was a librarian, she would come to the. Town hall more often than me, so I said, okay, here's the key, and then. See, we need to stop recording.
Yeah.
Otherwise we'll record like four hundred hours between now and.
End.
I think so. Actually, that's the meeting.
Yeah.
Let's not do that yet. That's, I think it'll stop when you end the meeting anyway.
It was a record button on here.
Yeah, is it under apps? No, how about the more? Okay. Oh, yeah, we should definitely do billable hours. There you go, stop recording.